I will call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll have a roll call, please.
Councilor Wallace.
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Yes. Citizen comments? Chair, Gary?
Hi. I'm going to go tell us here on snow removal. This year, I agree, it was actually during the snow out there. I particularly, I had a heart attack and when I come back, and I tried calling, and I went on Morris' sales line and, you know, like Willie's and stuff off the board and everything else, but for snow removal people, took numbers down. I called six, seven different people, a couple of people wouldn't even answer, they were so busy. But then, well, four to five of them said, "We'll try to get to them, but we're all just so far in bar." I had Raleigh do my driveway, because the wife's in court at the hospital, it's been 13 years, and so she can get out in the morning and stuff. But he didn't even have time to do the sidewalks, and he told me that he wouldn't be able to. So I was doing it up until I had my heart attack. But myself, I checked with quite a few other people, I found five to six people that were all wrote up the same day, by, on February 19th. It was just very strange, because every one of them told me too, that they couldn't keep up their sidewalks. They had a hard time trying to get anybody, and I know there's a lot of elderly out there that did not get anybody there. I just think it's very unfair of this year to be fine like this. You know, when it comes down to it, fine, that almost suggests willful intent. Well, I didn't willful attempt, I tried to reach people.
Did you make an effort to call the city?
After I got the ticket, but you know what?
Before, before you called, but before, you know, if you had a heart attack or you couldn't get to it, you didn't, did you make an effort to call City Hall or any of that?
No, I didn't, I attempted to try to get it done, because that's what needs to be done, they do need. I'm the first one to say, a lot of times I walk around, because I walk a lot. And, you know, I feel like these college kids, they'd rather buy twelve packs than a shovel at the time. You know, I mean, I agree, there's a lot of old people. And, I mean, basically, this year was a year where, like, even if you did have a shovel, the banks were so high. And after, when the snow plowed, they'd go by and just knock it right back down on the sidewalks anyway. I do question, why one day, you know, February 19th, why all these other people, February 19th? Because they all admit it too, that their sidewalks for the better part of the winter were old, because they couldn't keep up with it. And I know there's a lot of older people in this town that just can't get out and do it themselves. And I talked to the city manager afterwards, and he said, "Well," he says, "That's, you know, you can't really do anything for one person, you gotta do it for all." Well, maybe it should be, maybe things should be reasonable. This winter was different. This is not your average winter. And there are a lot of old people, I just question how many old people out there, you know, attempted to try to get people to do it. Because people couldn't keep up with it. All the people that moved snow, they were having a hard time.
Gary, for the, for the records, state your name and your address, please.
Gary Gillett, Eighth Dollar Street, but I rent, from Eric Easy.
Okay, that's fine.
Like I say, fine to get, I could see it if you intentionally do something, stuff like that, but I made every effort I could trying to get old people to do it.
I think, you know, in the future, maybe Gary, like, Councilor Solby was indicating, if, you know, I don't think we're unreasonable, people, but if you communicate that you're, you know, you have a medical condition, and you had a heart attack, something of that nature, maybe there's some, something we can do to accommodate people on those circumstances.
I'd like to speak with the older people though, too, I mean, because there are a lot of older people out there, too. But this year, you know, when you get overwhelmed, the people weren't just able to get to them to help them, even.
Yeah.
Well, and I don't believe that the elderly can't call up either, I mean, I just think that if you're in a hardship situation, the, the sick is not unreasonable, and it's preemptive to talk to somebody when you, before everything kind of goes out. Now, we're all sitting in the backtrack motion and trying to, trying to figure out how to correct it when, if we know.
I'm making a question, your methods in, why only February 19th? When mostly sidewalks were out here? I know, because I do walk a lot.
Yeah?
I don't, I don't, I don't.
I'm basing that push.
What I can, what I can, what I can say is, the, the snow started probably towards the end of December, the heavy snow. But, and I've had other people say that, you know, they got a bill and the sidewalks have been bad all winter. They haven't been bad all winter, and actually, they've gone out and they've checked, when they, I think they've checked three separate times for sidewalks. I think the first time they did it, there's probably about twenty-five of them that, that weren't done. So, so it's not like, we had sidewalks all over the, actually, this time on the nineteenth of February, there wasn't that, that many sidewalks that weren't done, you know.
I remember the day, my daughter-in-law's birthday, and I did walk around a lot in there, a lot of sidewalks.
Yeah, because traditionally, traditionally, what we found when we've gone out and inspected sidewalks is, out of probably fifteen, sixteen hundred properties in Morris, you usually find maybe, maybe a couple dozen of them that aren't done.
In a given year, but this year was blown up.
Yeah, well, towards the end, we didn't, you know, the last big go-around of snow, I don't think we went out and checked at all. You know, because it's gonna wind up melting towards the end. But that just happened to be the day they went out and checked. So they, they don't check every day, they don't check every week. Typically, our guys that are, are doing the checking are actually doing snow removal for the city. So they, they were way behind on snow removal, and actually got into a cycle where they're trying to not only do the streets and do all the stuff that we do, well, then they got into cleaning corners and trying to dig up, dig out fire hydrants and all that kind of stuff. So, so it just happened to be, you know, a point in time, you know, because, because the way the laws are written is, two days after the snow stops, well, if the snow doesn't stop, and it just keeps rotating through, you don't really get a chance to get caught back up to go out and do an inspection. So that's, that's why the inspect, I think we only did three, I don't know if you know, I think we only went out three times this year. Two or three.
I think, like, maybe one possible solution for situations like Gary was in, where we get people that, you know, for some sort of medical reasons, whatever, you know, we have several service organizations in our community, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. I mean, if there would be some way we could post, maybe a calling tree, if you will, of maybe a couple of contact points for some of those service organizations.
Well, that's, yeah, that's.
Somebody like Gary could call and say, you know, "I, I'm, I need some help here, I can't do it myself. Would there be anybody in your, your organization that'd be able to help me out?" I think there's a lot of people out there that would be willing to help somebody out in that situation if they knew. So I don't know if there's something we could do to facilitate that, or.
That, or a friend, or a neighbor, I mean, on the, the last heavy snowstorms, I did seven of my neighbors, just because the next two houses next to me are two widow ladies. The third house is an eighty-six-year-old guy with his wife that don't get out, I mean.
I usually do my neighbors.
I take care of about eight houses.
My neighbors usually gone all the time, and I usually do it because I'm a truck.
But, yeah, I mean, it can get, just as a suggestion, and.
And I can get anybody to do mine with me, but, you know. This year was not your average year.
You're right, it wasn't.
It wasn't an average year for the last five, but it certainly, or ten, but we've had storms.
I shoveled every year up until this year, you know. I mean, even with the heart, you know, not having a heart attack, I would have had a hard time keeping up this year.
Do, do you said.
I lived there in the same place for, what, eleven years now.
You said you rent, Gary?
Yeah.
So you might want to check the, check the landlord-tenant, your landlord might be responsible for shoveling.
No, not unless you make that arrangement with him, when you move in. Yeah, it's part of lawn upkeep and stuff like that, but.
It might be worth checking with HR, because if they're licensed unit.
Not yet, I don't know.
Okay, well.
How much is the fine?
Forty dollars for the snow removal, or twenty-five dollars for the snow fine, you know, to me, like I say, I still feel like the fine is usually something that you acquire from, you know, neglecting something, or doing something wrong, or something, you know, locally. And then the snow processing, or the processing fee was twenty-five dollars for stuffing an envelope, I guess, twenty-five.
Well, it's not stuffing an envelope, and that's one of the things we've talked about before. Somebody's got to go out and inspect the property, then, then, once we identify what properties have, have snow that's on the sidewalks, we have to identify who owns them, because there's no, there's no sign on the house that says who owns them. So you have to, you have to go figure out who owns the house, then you have to send a letter. And, and in this, this case, one of the things that we did with, with snow removals, we actually changed the rules, city council did, so we can go out and hire somebody, so then, you know, the, the director of public works will put together a list, we'll, we'll hire a contractor to go out and do it for us, once we get that bill back from the contractor, then we have to do up a bill to the, to the owner of the property, because the bill never went to you, right?
Right.
It went to the owner of the property.
Right, but I am still responsible.
But you're responsible under your lease for it, and then, if it doesn't get paid, then we have to try to collect it. So by the time you figure all the people that had to touch that, that one event, that's where that administrative fee comes in. You know, because.
I'm guessing ninety percent of your stuff is all rental, and you can go on a rental list that you haven't booked, but, you know, you can't debate any of that. Question, all it meant about one day was only the one day, because, you know, I know for a fact, you know, there was generally about thirty-five percent of the town sidewalks were under snow. And the, the wind blew constantly every day, every day, it don't matter if it wasn't snowing, it still had the sidewalks covered over and over.
Yeah, and that's, that's true.
I can see it in a normal year, but this year, you know, it just reminds me of like when the Ford lot sold out there, and it was empty, and all of a sudden, all that year, man, there were so many cars towed, the sun's, the car got towed there, and everything else. I mean, you build that lot of the cars, and I haven't seen a towing since, you know, but the convenience of the lot was there.
So we towed, we towed.
It looks like a motivate thing.
See, that's, we don't do things that way, if you think we do, we don't. So the last time we had a snow alert, I think we towed seventeen cars. So we just don't, we just don't haul them there, because we're not allowed to put them there anymore.
I think if you're, you know, I don't think we wanted to beat our policy all day long here, but I think, are you, if you're asking for, for us to do something that based on your hardship, I mean, I can, I can concur with, you know, your medical hardship there and not being able to find somebody, that, is that what you're kind of asking for us to do, Gary?
Well, I was, I was looking out for mine, but I just feel that there's a lot of older people, too, out there that, you know, "We'll just pay it and don't come out," when they're not really wrong, because even the insinuated fine is almost like you're, you know, intentionally doing something, I know that.
Well, and I think that that's not the case intentionally, it's, in this day and age, of how connected everybody is, I don't find it unrealistic for somebody to make a telephone call to the city. So then, then it would not be a problem, because I think that we can decipher the hardships. I mean, Blaine's pretty good about it, everybody in the office, I think, is very understanding, it's just, when you get to the point where nobody said anything, you have to follow procedure, you know? That, that, I think, so that, we're not, I don't want to see any blame being on any of the people from the city, and they're, they're doing their jobs, and without knowing that there was a hardship, or that somebody wanted to vocalize that there is one, it's really hard to, to do that. So, and you coming here today to vocalize that, that's great, I think that you should do that, obviously, terrible that you had, you had the medical problem that you did. And, I mean, I would suggest that in future, if you're doing it, to just make a phone call?
I would ask.
And say, "Hey, you know what, call up Blaine or Stacy and say, 'You know what, I can't get my sidewalk in the hospital, I really, I can't find anybody to do it,' you know what, they're gonna, they're gonna."
I would ask maybe to throw an ad on in the print office here, when you print the snow removal stuff out, that, you know, this is something that can be done, you know? Alternatives, if you run into health problems, or if you're an elderly person and can't reach anybody to do it, then. Because I would have never guessed the whole city, because it's not your responsibility, it's my responsibility, and I'd try, but you know, but.
But I think maybe that's something we should maybe put out there, too, and maybe a memo or a note or on the, there, that if you have an issue, a, a decent
Well, reasonable.
Reasonable issue that you can't, you know, obviously, you're in the hospital with a heart attack, that's, that's obviously a reason that you can't get your, your, your sidewalk.
So as a result of the, of these, on February 19th, we hired, the city hired somebody to come and clean your sidewalk? So, so one of the contractors did come and clean your.
Yeah, I guess.
Okay. You know.
I thought it was.
Which, which kind of brings up a little bit of a.
Larry Impson do it, too, and stuff, and now.
Kind of brings up a little question, I'm, I don't know who we hired, it doesn't really matter, but if it's one of them that, that Gary called and said, "Hey, can you get to my sidewalk?" And they say, "No," but the city calls and say, "Can you go get Gary's sidewalk?" There's a little bit of a conflict there, and I don't like that kind of conflict, you know what I mean?
Shortage for people trying to.
Are we, are we keeping a contractor busy so that, so that they just can't go on their own, and, you know, between him and, them and Gary to do it? Or, or what's going on there, I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't think that would be the, because they're gonna.
Well, it takes time.
They're gonna make their money either way.
Right, but.
A lot of people out there willing to move snow and stuff, and that is just they couldn't keep up with it.
Oh, yeah, right, no, we, we all move snows.
They were gonna try and make it, and they were, you know, but it was, it looked bad this year.
Yeah, for sure.
But I think you're done, Miller.
Yeah, thank you, Gary.
Go ahead, Gary.
Is there something that you, are you gonna?
I think we should talk about that in other business.
Other business?
Yeah, let's, let's, but let's talk about it, let's not forget about it.
Right.
So, but we'll move on, any other citizens' comments? Marshall?
Putting a different hat on right now, Marshall Hoffman. I want to invite you all and inform you of a special event that's coming to Morris on April thirteenth. We, I'm with the Morris Area Arts Boosters, and we're working with the Morris Area Community Ed, it's like four years running now. We try to secure a grant, and we got one finally, after repeated efforts from the Lake Reeds Arts Council, to help bring the camp, Chinese Dance Theater, to perform a beautiful Chinese dance performance, which is coming two p.m., that are performed at the Concert Hall, Saturday, April thirteenth. They're gonna be bringing like twenty-five other dancers for that event. We're working with the schools the day before, with the Community Ed class on that Friday night before, and hopefully get some community involvement in the performance itself, as well. And we're kind of all melding in with our annual arts festival and carnival that we have at the school. Every year, that'll be preceding this performance, but it'll be special, there'll be some special things as, as well at the arts festival, Chinese calligraphy, and Chinese arts and crafts, and all that, especially everything. Many of them are first generation, born in China, some of the teachers there, students are a mix of first and second generations. They're based out of Minneapolis, but they do, I've seen them myself in the Flint Cities, do their performances, and they're exquisite. Their costumes are beautiful, and the music's really nice, and it's their debut here in Morris, so I just want to inform you and invite you all to come, it's gonna be a special, a special event.
Where's that at, Marshall?
That will be at, at the, at the Concert Hall of the Elementary School.
Okay.
On the thirteenth of April. I know it's a busy day, but lots of things going on right there.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. Any other citizen comments? Okay, we have no public hearings tonight, we're reading an approval of minutes from March thirteenth, or twelfth, regular meeting.
I'll move approval of the regular meeting.
I'll have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried, and we have the same condensed version of the minutes.
I'll move on the condensed version of the minutes.
I'll have a second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And the consent agenda consists of the audit of city bills, the gambling reports from the Eagles, and the tree board minutes. And I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda. Somebody got a second?
I see.
Okay. Any questions or any comments on any of the items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Petitions, requests, and communications, I will make a motion to appoint Rob Jurgensen to the park board. Any discussion? It's nice for people stepping up, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Barn Quilt, Stevens County Historical Society.
Well, I can, I can speak to it, I thought Ward was gonna be here, he might have forgot that we're gonna put it on the agenda, he was at the park board meeting. And actually, I think you guys heard from him before on this, maybe.
He came and talked to us.
Because originally, the, originally, the plan was to do barn quilts in the parks, so like, Jensted Park, Wells Park, and Eastside Park, they'd all have, have a, a barn quilt put up. Well, then, they, they changed their mind on that, and decided to go for a grant, and, and that's what this is all about, is a plan for a grant that would give them the funding to be able to do up these twenty-eight barn quilts. They talked with the park board, the park board's recommending that, the city council authorized them, allow them to do that in Pomontiere Park. And then, basically, each camping spot's gonna have a little two-by-two barn quilt there that will identify that spot. The barn quilts themselves are based upon the various national parks in the United States. So that's where they get their design cue from, and, and we actually, I think we put in the, the handout that he had, that he presented to the park board, so you can see what they look like. For instance, the one that's on this handout is the Grand Canyon in Arizona, and, and then they'll have a little bit of information below them. And so the only thing that the city would wind up doing is, is help put in the posts. And then volunteers would help put up the actual barn quilts, and they'll be, they'll be designed, and they'll be done by somebody else as part of the art grant. We always talked about possibly doing arts and parks and things like that, so this is a chance to do something with that. So we're really, we're looking for a motion to authorize the barn quilts to go in Pomontiere Park, the campground.
Just a que, was there a reason that they chose just to put them all in the Pomontiere Park, rather than spread them out through all the parks?
I think their new design, I think it was just easier for them to do a project like that than, because it's actually gonna create more of them. They're smaller, probably, but there's gonna be more of them. It, it's just an idea they came up with, is really the reason for it.
I'll move in that motion to allow the placement of the twenty-eight barn quilts in the Pomontiere Park. I think it's like, I think it's a new project, when it's all up.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Who, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Party department grant application.
So this is just a motion to authorize us to apply for this grant, you can see, the grant total requested is five thousand dollars. This is one of those ongoing grants, I believe that David was gonna be here to talk, talk to it, but.
Is this a match?
There's a partial match to it.
What's the partial match?
Do you, do you remember what that was, Dave?
I feel like this was usually fifty percent.
Because we have money in the budget for.
For grants.
I think, granted, budget. Well, did that, did that settle it?
Well, I know it's normally for equipment items that are in the budget every year, regardless, so it's things that they need that are budgeted, and if we can get a grant for five thousand of it to pay for things that we need, I think it makes sense.
Yeah, fifty-fifty match.
Fifty-fifty, okay.
Yep. Is that a motion, councilman?
I will make a, a motion to apply for the rural fire grant for the amount of five thousand dollars with a fifty percent match by the city.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Ordinances and resolutions, we have a resolution adopting post issuance debt compliance policy for tax exempt and tax advantaged governmental bonds for the city of Morris.
Red tape.
Red tape.
Is basically what it is, we get this from our, our, our bond consultants, there's things that we're required to do once we issue issued debt, so this is just one of the requirements that we have, is to establish a policy for compliance with debt.
You know, are we, oh, just, this is just a broad policy, there's not specific to a certain debt.
No, this is more of a broad policy.
Okay.
Yeah, they're just adding, adding new regulations here and there that we have to comply with, and this, this is one. Doesn't, doesn't really cost us any money, I, I don't believe, there's a couple items that.
We have them do some of the reporting for us, not just cost us money. We did do this back in two thousand thirteen, so there's just been a few changes, and it was time to update it. So, there's a resolution of all the standard procedures, it's all in the pack there, and they sent it up once for us.
Okay.
I'll move on the resolution adopting post issuance debt compliance policy for tax exempt and tax advantaged governmental bonds for the city of Morris, and this is all that.
I will second that. Any further discussion on the resolution? We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Solby?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution authorizing advertising for bids for waste lime removal. Now, this is something we can understand.
This, yeah.
I can understand, anyway.
Well, you. So this, so what you have is you have a memo, and you have the resolution, then you actually have the bid specifications. Actually, when we first got them from Bolt and Mank Engineering, I didn't necessarily like them. There's a couple things that were in there that I think they just pulled out of kind of standard government kind of things. One, one area was the, the list, what was there, like, ten areas of insurance they wanted the, the hauler to have? I can't even remember what the total cost of all the insurances were, but we actually went up and visited St. Cloud, and the language that's in this bid spec for insurance is exactly what's in the St. Cloud bid spec. You know, so they, they asked for six hundred thousand dollars, and then twelve, one point two million aggregate for, for liability coverage, and that was it. Well, if it's good enough for them, as big as they are, you know, it just seemed like massive overkill. The other thing is that it, I actually asked the question of the engineer, "Are we assuming that all the people bidding on this are gonna already be in the business of hauling lime?" Because I don't know that that's necessarily the case locally, so why are we requiring them to have all the licenses, all the insurance, have everything in place to bid? And so we actually changed it, you know, so that you need to have that stuff prior to the, the actual agreement being exercised, which, which they can do, and in some cases, I've talked to two farmers locally that may be interested in taking lime, because they're already taking lime from the beet plants, you know, so it's not a new concept to them. You do, you do have to have a US Department, or Minnesota Department of Agriculture license to produce lime waste, which will apply to the license and will have it, and then you have to have a license to haul it, but it seems like it's a pretty straightforward thing to get that license. So these plans and specs are, you know, based upon trying to make it allowable for a local farmer or local company that wants to be able to haul waste lime from our facility. There are some things that they have to be able to do, they have to be able to take it when we need them to take it. We're not gonna be generating a mass quantity of, of lime, you know, but there needs to be a trailer available when they need to be ready to dump lime, that is something that, that St. Cloud had, always had a trailer sitting there when, when they're ready to dump, and, and. You know, that's pretty much it, we're kind of on a fast track to do this, just because of the nature of us starting up our production of. Uh, we're kind of on a fast track to do this just because of the nature of us starting up our production of uh soft water in May. So we're gonna have the opening of the bids on the ninth of, I believe it's the ninth of uh of uh April, Tuesday, and then we have a meeting that night. I was a little bit concerned about that cause I hadn't heard from the school yet. Usually we do a school meeting in April. And I did hear from uh Mr. Greenwald today that uh we're gonna shoot for the twenty third to do the school school meeting. They're actually behind because of all the snow and stuff. And so so this will work out. We'll open bids that that morning and bring them to the city council to review that night.
Wayne, how are we gonna, are we, how are we gonna just, I don't even know what the word is. Are we set up to disperse or how do we handle that lime? Is it gonna be like a whole grid system?
Yeah, I can explain it exactly because I've seen it done. So in in the water treatment plant, there is a big compressor. And it and so the lime lime comes out of the the processing and it's a sludge. And then that sludge is pumped up into the the big compressor unit. What it does is it just squeezes it. It's got plates and squeezes lime in between the plates. And then uh it'll get it down to like a sixty percent uh water content. And then when it's time to to dump the lime, then the machine will just start pulling the plates off one by one. And then there's like a plate of lime. See, up in Saint Cloud, it was about that thick. It was just a huge plate of compressed lime. And it just drops out into the truck that's waiting to go, semi trailer. And so there's a a driveway so they can come in with the trailer and park it underneath. And yeah, it just drops it right in the trailer and they go.
So there's not like a holding tank or anything for?
There's a holding tank for the sludge.
For the sludge.
Uh, and then once they're ready to pump it into the the lime press, then then eventually, once that process is done, then they gotta get it out of there. Cause you do not want it to sit in there very long, cause it might not come out. And then they'll actually dial in the system. Um, Ryan and the guys will have to figure out how to dial in the system to to get it just to the right consistency so it'll drop out right. Yeah, so it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward.
What do you anticipate the traffic of that being? Is there, is it gonna be like a weekly thing, monthly thing?
Probably twice a week.
Twice a week, they'll come?
Yep.
Like two semis a week?
Probably two trailers a week, yep. Whereas Saint Cloud has, I think, six a day. You know, they're that big where they they constantly have trucks coming in and going out.
So with the holding tank for the sludge, are they able to like over the weekend so that they're
Yep.
And not dealing with that, that they can hold it and
Yeah, I, yeah.
Get things in and out.
I think that's the way it's gonna work. But then I, you know, I think, you know, the the trailer has to be available whenever they need it, you know, that's part of the agreement. And so who's ever gonna do it, you know? And like I said, I talked to a couple of local farmers, you know, that are interested in it and and they're gonna have to commit to using it. But there's there's local farmers that are actually getting lime now, but they're just giving it from a lot farther away. Whether it's Renville or or Wapperton, cause those are the nearest places with beet plants, I think.
Yeah, it says they're gonna generate at they're at what they're guessing about twenty one hundred cubic yards of lime byproduct per year from the facility. And that seems like a lot. But I guess it's gonna be a lot of water going through it. We just, we'll work through it and figure it out as we go.
Yep.
Is there an estimate on what this theoretically or what we think this will cost? Or is there just no estimate? Somebody could do it.
Saint Cloud was eleven, like eleven dollars and fifteen cents per cubic yard.
So that's how they bid it out, cubic yard?
They, yeah.
Cubic yard.
And is it, is the bid like a yearly annual? Can they go back for bids in another year or is that?
Three year contract.
It was a three year with the option.
Two year option extension.
Was somewhere in here, I read. So it's based on generating approximately the twenty one, twenty one hundred cubic yards annually. It can fluctuate up or down as we get going. And then it was a three year with an option for two. But they have to supply the trailer.
Yeah, and if they're gonna take lime from us, then they have to have a, their storage site's gotta be appropriate according to according to MPCA and all that, but they're already doing that. You know, if they're if they're getting lime now, they can't just grab it and then go dump it on the corner of a field somewhere, I don't think. Uh, it's probably not acceptable. And then we'll get a performance bond from them to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Cool.
Well, I'll move on that resolution authorizing advertising bids for the waste lime.
I will second.
Great, any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
From Homer Miller?
Yes.
Bellington?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. We have a resolution authorizing a professional services agreement for the design engineering for the twenty nineteen apron taxi lane pavement rehab project at the airport.
And we actually have Marcus Watsons here from TKDA. If you got any questions on either one of the these, this one or the next item, uh, he's willing to answer questions. There's two projects that that we're gonna be talking about. One is the uh apron uh taxi lane pavement rehabilitation. It's part of our capital improvement program for the airport. It's it's something that has been kind of in the queue uh coming up for uh for dealing with. And um the the grant will come out sometime uh for the actual construction will come out sometime towards the end of the fiscal year for the federal government, which ends in September. Uh, this is for the design engineering and uh it's it's part of our capital improvement plan. And you can see the uh the actual um the actual cost is is the local share cause the the grants will be paying the the remaining part of it. So we're talking a net local share of four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. You know, and just one, just one note, you know, um, we're we're gonna be talking about an air, a big airport project. But once we have those things built, we have to maintain them. So this is a maintenance item that we're gonna be doing. There's gonna be another maintenance item that's gonna be coming up uh in in the next go around of discussions. And that's the reconstruction of the main runway, you know, that we're gonna have to deal with, which is something that we wind up dealing with over course of time too.
Okay, I will move the uh move approval of the resolution authorizing professional services agreement for the design engineering for the two thousand nineteen apron taxi lane pavement rehab project.
I'll second.
And any further discussion, any questions uh on this?
Or just, is it just resurfacing it? Is that the extent of it?
Yeah, so as far as this goes, these are the the pavements in between the hangars and then the apron and fuel system in the hangars. If you've been out there lately, there's a lot of alligator cracking going on there.
Sure.
There would be a kind of a two part solution is what's proposed in the design. One is just a brown fill, some of the larger cracks that are out there. But the larger issue that's there is just all the alligator cracking. There'll be a thin seal coat layer of foil and some matter mixed together that would be applied on that. Just essentially what we're calling is a bit of a band-aid until the full one reconstruction, um, which is now planned for February, running until two thousand twenty two. So this will be another three, four years of this for all, um, using a federal one before it's larger.
I think we might keep it safe. I mean, it appears that if there's
Oh, yeah.
Kind of put somebody at risk of, and so on and like that.
Yeah, see some evidence, maybe with some markers or a straw and maybe some pavements starting to come up. So we're trying to do what we can to keep it a safe operating environment.
Great. Thank you. Any other, any other questions?
No, this this is just the planning and design of it. This is not the physical work.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
But it's still even the work. I think the estimate for everything was like two hundred thousand dollars. And then the local share is only five percent of that.
Of, you mean the two?
Of the two hundred thousand. And then it's dependent on what the bid is.
But it still kills me how working with them that it takes them all summer and the project to be a go for the fall of two thousand nineteen. It's just everything in fall, you're getting ready to wrap up and try to get things ready for winter. And here we're just getting ready to start on a project.
We talked about that because that's the nature of the federal program, um, is that the grants go in. And typically you don't get your grant until later in their fiscal years, August, September. So typically, yeah, they're doing the work. If it's a minor project like this relatively speaking towards the end, towards the fall. But if you have a much larger project, you're likely to be in it next construction season.
Issues with the the black topping or the the top coat that late in the year? I mean, obviously, we need to have the weather cooperate. There's a cutoff or a temperature before?
There is, um, you know, I I can't speak to the specifics, the engineers in the office will go to it. But typically, what I've seen is about fifty degrees is that cutoff. Against a warming day, it's not cold, we do a silo or a, or see something happen to it.
Yeah, it just, that's how it is, I guess we have to to deal with.
Well, there's nothing to say that you couldn't do it the next spring.
Provide a contractor with
If the, if the contractor would, that's the problem that you have with bids. You know, we ran into a bid problem with the hangar, cause you had to have a bid to get a grant. And then they didn't approve a grant. And then that contractor wasn't happy holding on to that bid, especially with steel prices going up and stuff. But like with the parallel taxiway, I think Riley's came in and started doing as much as they could in the fall to start moving dirt around and all that kind of stuff. And then once it froze and once it snowed, then they pretty much had to wait until the next year. It just depends on how soon the grant comes and how soon we can get the bid and if they can come in, you know, right away.
Yeah, it is what it is.
Be nice if they're on more, cause the state's, what fiscal year is it, June?
Yeah, June thirty.
June thirty. Be nice if they're on the state fiscal year. That'd make it a little bit easier, but it'd be nice if everybody was on the same fiscal year, but that's never gonna change.
That's not happening.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna happen.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Okay, so we have a a motion and a second on this resolution. Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bellington?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bobby? Waller?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. We have a resolution authorizing professional services agreement for environmental assessment for the runway extension project.
So one of, one of the things I indicated in my memo to you is that I haven't got the the uh the actual independent fee estimate yet at the time I was doing the uh the agenda. I did find out what the amount was, uh, but I hadn't seen the detail. And so actually, I sent you an email that has has that actual independent fee assessment, estimate. And uh, uh, actually, they were, they're very, very close. But I I wanna just let you know what the process was. So I did not get the information from TKDA uh prior to going to KLJ um to get the information from them. So they are truly independent and 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 yet they're they're within a very close amount. So one of the things I did is I did a uh Excel spreadsheet um comparing the major portions of this. And one of the things I would tell you is that I remember having, I think it was one of the construction bids that was estimated at over two million dollars and they came, came in within, I think the two top bidders came in with within ten thousand dollars. And it's really because the specifications that you have to follow when you're, when you're bidding this stuff are, it's pretty detailed. Actually, you'll find that document, I didn't, I didn't give it to you because I was kind of joking with Marcus a little bit. But um, the document's in there and some, for some reason, engineers like to put spreadsheets all on an eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper and you can hardly read them. Uh, but uh, the actual detail, you should be able to find it in the information I sent you. Cause there's a lot of detailed lines within those categories, the task categories, of what it is they have to do. And then they estimate the number of hours that they have to do them. Uh, and then they 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 put their labor costs in to those hours that they're doing. And and if you look at that breakdown, you know, one is a hundred and seventy one thousand two fifty four. The other one's a hundred and seventy thousand seven twenty three. As long as they're within ten percent, they're okay. Uh, but actually, when it comes to the specific tasks, there are some categories where one's higher than the other for whatever reason. But uh, it's the nature of, you know, what they're working on. It's not rocket scientistness stuff necessarily. Uh, that's what they do for a living and and uh, you know, we we do find bids for things that are fairly close just because prices tend to, tend to be fairly close, uh, even in engineering uh fees and stuff like that. So so my recommendation is that you pass the resolution authorizing the agreement with TKDA. It is the last, it's the last agreement we can do right now until we actually go out for proposals for new engineers. We'll probably do that sometime this summer or fall.
Towards the fall.
Towards the fall, because there's no other projects that we have to do uh engineering wise uh once we get started with this. And and then uh we'll have to go for, out for bids for engineering uh before we can do another one.
Cool, that really came in close.
Yes, the process, the same. I mean, as far as us taking low bid, I mean, are we obligated to take the low bid on a project like this? He naturally would.
No. No, they 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 allow you to be within ten percent. If it was, if it was in, if it was over ten percent, then we do have the right to go back to the engineering firm and negotiate a better price with them. Anna?
So a couple more comments on that. So the way the process works, Wayne mentioned the the consultant selection, junior selection process. So it's part of the last selection that was done, posted five years ago now, they selected TKDA. It's a qualifications based selection. And then each of the contracts that come from that are task orders or authorizations, um, then those fees can be measured against an independent review and it'll be the basis for your negotiation. So it's not really a bid process where traditionally we see that in a construction project where you go out and it's based on price. Professional services for the airport, um, based on the federal requirements are qualifications based. But you have checks and balances here to make sure it's within the industry review services.
Okay.
Yeah, great.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I always like to say, you know, and I think I've said it here at the table before, consult consultants are almost like doctors. You know, when you find consultants that you like to work with, um, you like to stick with them. If you don't, if you don't like what they're doing, then then you have a right to change and go out, look for somebody new. Uh, in the case of airports, it's mandated that you go out and look for someone new every five years. Or not, not new, but you you go out and check, check what qualifications are out there.
Well, I'll move on that. Services agreement for the environmental assessment for the runway extension project.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on the resolution?
Reformation TKDA as part of that resolution at all?
Uh, it's well, it's, it's in there, so.
It's in the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah. Any, any further discussion? Now, we'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Bellington?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Thank you. City manager's report.
Uh, I think I'll just touch on one or two things and then answer any questions. Uh, my biggest concern right now is what's gonna happen with local government aid. Uh, I did get some information from the coalition where there's some unique ideas that are floating around about. Yes, maybe putting more money into local government aid, but then targeting that aid to small
yes, maybe putting more money into local government aid, but then targeting that aid to small cities. Um, and as I mentioned in here, you know, we saw that happen with additional road funding. You know, because the small cities argued that, well, we don't get any road funding. And, and my argument always is, yeah, but you don't have bigger roads typically. If you go to Chicago, if you go to Alberta, if you go to, to Donley, if you go to Hancock, the county roads are taken care by the county. You know, that's the way it's done. Within the city limits of Morris, typically, we have bigger, bigger roads that we wind up dealing with ourselves. And, and that's what we get the funding for. It's for state aid roads. It's not for all of our roads. And whereas, you know, targeting lo, um, local government aid for small cities, they can put it into almost anything. I mean, there, there are cities that were talking, I remember I was actually down at the Capitol last year and one city was arguing that they needed the money for a storm sewer reconstruction. And I'm sitting there going, we just did a storm sewer reconstruction. And, and we had, you know, we got some money from the federal government, but at the same time, you know, we're doing assessments for, for road projects and stuff. And that's, local government aid really wasn't meant for that. Uh, and, and if you're gonna target that money, you know, add money to local government aid and target it, target it to small cities, then we're gonna be in trouble. And I sent the email to both Westrum and, and Backer about that, that that's not a good solution. A good solution is, you know, keeping the formula that they have right now and just putting more money into it. So we'll see what happens with that. Um, the governor came out and said he wanted, what, thirty million in? Uh, he didn't have any, yeah, any plan to kind of target that to, to a specific group for any, any reason. So we'll see what happens with that and we'll have to keep an eye on that. Um, Climate Smart Municipalities had a retreat up at Camp Ripley and we talked about, um, the visits that are gonna take place with the Germans this year and lots, there's lots of good things going on. There's a couple of German interns that are gonna be coming here in the next month. One's gonna be working with us, one's gonna be working with, with Central Research and Outreach. So, we're kinda excited about that. And when they come, we'll get a chance to bring them in here and have them meet with you and.
Guido's coming?
Guido's gonna be coming, he's coming for a special trip where he's gonna be doing some additional work in Minnesota and, and additional work working here. You know, uh, they're really excited about the strategic plan that was just passed by the city and some of the things that are going on here, so it's kinda, kinda fun. Morris Models meeting tomorrow and, uh, the one last thing we have to do with that West Central Initiative Fund Grant that we got is hold a public information session. So we're probably gonna look at doing something like we did before at Old Number One and invite the public to come in. We'll present the strategic plan and all the things that we worked on, you know, so that the public can see it. Other than that, I'll just answer questions.
Uh, Blaine, on the energy audits, are nonprofits included in that as well? They know it says for businesses.
I think there are churches, I think they went and looked at some churches. I think there were nonprofits that were involved with that.
Are they done with those?
Yeah, I think they're all done with them.
Yeah, I think our church, I think, Father Todd said that someone had contacted us. So I was just wondering if that was.
Yep, I think so.
Assuming that's all of the nonprofits there. That's good.
Okay.
Is there a big part of that? What's that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Have Ben give me a call sometime, will you?
Yep.
About that? Good.
Yeah, and census jobs, there's census jobs out there. So if anybody's looking for something, something to do, they got, I think there's four, four of them right now working with the regional census coordinator. And, uh, and then they'll line up a whole bunch of people for next year when they actually take the census.
Okay, any other questions of Blaine on the city manager report? Okay. Other business, uh... Snow removal, fine. Um, I don't, I don't know, what, what, what do you guys think on that? Um, I don't know if he's actually asking for some help, a break, forgiveness? I'm not exactly sure.
Well, I, yeah, but I think he was more concerned about the story forward, you know? If there's people that are in a hardship situation, how do we deal with that? And I know Brian, kinda, I think had the best idea, you know, if you can just tell people ahead of time, let you have a problem before you get the bill, you know, somehow communicate that. But, you know, maybe they are in a position where they can even communicate that they're having a problem. You might be in a hospital or something.
Right.
So, I don't know, maybe we, we assess some sort of a process with situations like that.
But, you know, I, I really liked one of the comments, I'm not sure who said it, about, you know, service organizations or, or, or some Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, whoever it is, um, you know, maybe put the word out and say, you know, are, is your organization available to do something like this? Whether there's a donation, a charge, or whatever. Um, you know, if we could compile a list and not only we keep it at City Hall, if people call and say, hey, I can't get my snow done, I can't get hold of a contractor, what kind of help is out there? But also give that list to the contractors.
Right.
You know, if they're too busy to do it, you know, and hey, you know, I got this list, you could call so-and-so from the Boy Scouts. And, you know, give it a shot.
They would get the consent somehow on our website, you know, if they're.
Yeah.
A tab or something for, you know, that would.
It would be a great project for the Boy Scouts or.
Oh, yeah.
You know, to be kind of that backup for, you know, somebody that, you know, I, I talked on the radio about that. I know four, five years, maybe longer ago where, you know, like Jeff lives in our neighborhood. And actually, if I remember right, because the sidewalks got filled in so hard, somebody actually had to move over. That was probably you and get into the grass, just to clear, just to clear a path because the sidewalks are packed in already. And, uh, uh, at the same time, you know, there, there may be people that are living in a house that have nobody. They have absolutely nobody. And you don't know about them, you know? But if a neighbor knew about them, they'd probably take care of them, because that's what happens in our neighborhood. Uh, if the church knew about them, they maybe would take care of them. But, but it's like, you gotta reach out and try to figure out who your neighbors are, if they're struggling, and then help them out. Because if you got a snowball or tranked up, it doesn't take that much time to go buy a, a house that's next to you.
Now, has he already paid his bill? I don't know if I ever quite got that.
I, I don't, I don't know if he paid it or not.
Any idea, I mean, if the ticket was two nineteen, how long the snow was there by the time you got the ticket? I mean, was it a boom-boom or had it been a while?
No, it wasn't a blowout. We don't, because it take, like I said, you know, we don't go checking. We have this discussion every, every once in a while where, you know, when do you actually go out and look? Because we're in a cycle and he mentioned the wind blowing. Well, yeah, we talk about that too. You know, if the wind's blowing it in again, you know, when is it actually done to where you can stop and clear up? Well, our guys are fighting the same thing. So they're constantly trying to get their, their own things done with the roads and sidewalks and parking lots and every, you know, senior citizen center and all that kind of stuff too. And it just seemed like about the time you're starting to get caught up and then it came back again. So when they get a break, then they'll actually go out and start looking. But for the most part, most of the places are done. This last time around, it got to the point where, especially on corners, you couldn't get it done. You just couldn't get it done. You know, so I would venture to guess that it probably had been sitting there for a while. It wasn't, it wasn't, you know, two days like the ordinance says.
Right.
It was probably a lot longer than that, that it was sitting there.
If it was in the hospital, you probably couldn't pick any action.
Right. But it's like, you know, I don't know, you know, I don't, I don't know him. I don't know, you know, if he has family. I don't know if he has friends or whoever, somebody watching out for him. But there are people like that that have nobody. And they're still in their houses. They're struggling to be in their house and it's mowing in the summer and it's snow removal in the winter. And I know the last time I talked to somebody that probably fell into this category, she said, I have absolutely no one to come and help me. And so then, you know, and then I was, I was gonna call somebody and, and actually maybe just go over there myself. And then she called me back and she said, my neighbor just did it. And, and it was like, she had, she had went and talked to her neighbor and the neighbor did it, you know? And so, then I think they made, made kind of a, not friendship, but they made a connection where the neighbor had no idea that she was struggling with it.
Well, I guess in Gary's particular case, I guess I wouldn't have a problem at all for giving his, his fine. I mean, it's.
I don't think he asked for that though. I mean, I, I go back to if he got, I don't know when he got the letter, but it was done in February nineteenth and it's now April, no May.
When, when he called me and talked to me, you know, what I said to him is, I, I, I can't just let you out of it. Because then, because that, he's not the only one that, that calls, whether it's towing or snow removal. Uh, that, that, you know, and a lot of times they'll ask, well, when did this happen? I don't remember it being snowy or whatever. But, uh, when he called me, he, he said, I'm willing to pay for the snow removal, but I don't like the fact that I got fined because I was in the hospital and that heart attack. And it's not that I did something intentionally to ignore the, the rule. And then he did not like the administrative fee at all. You know, because he couldn't understand why, why we're fining and then putting another fee on it.
Right.
You know, and so that's, I, I know he'd be more than willing to pay the, the, the cost of the snow removal, but.
What is the other HPs?
Well, what was it, twenty-five and twenty-five?
Yeah, he said it was forty, forty, twenty-five and twenty-five is what he said, ninety dollars.
Yeah, that's.
Ends up to be ninety-four, forty-seven with tax, I believe.
Oh, okay.
So then with anybody that comes and says that.
I know you're setting a precedence, I know is what you're probably getting at, and I, I understand that too. Because I gotta be careful, you know, it's a fine lane you walk, you know?
Yeah, you got the sides that wanna get out there and walk and you want your sidewalk shoveled. You have your residents that come and they're walking their dogs and their dogs are getting frozen body parts because the snow's not shoveled and, you know, you can't please everybody. You either gotta do it or not do it. You know, if we have a, a source, we have a list to help out with people that hopefully... But you, you can't have it both ways.
But I, and I, I think it goes back to what I said, it's preemptive. Um, if you have an issue where you don't have anybody, call the city. And then we can set you up with somebody. Or at least we don't send you out, we know that you're on our radar. We're, we're not gonna send it out to you. We're gonna try to hook you up with somebody to do it or, or if you've got a heart attack, well, you know, those decisions can be made before the fact. After the fact, I think it's a little harder.
Yeah.
But there's, but there's things that. Mowing any of it, if you call and work with us.
Well, that's any bill. And it, it's great that he came here because all that was brought up to us. But I think going, going forward, like you said, that let people know if there's truly, um, a problem, that this isn't gonna happen, then, then they should be calling Blaine ahead of time.
And I think too, if we, if we do get that set up on our website, um, next year, hopefully we won't have any snow removal issues anymore this year. But next fall, just remind people, once again, that, you know, if you happen to, if you have some sort of a circumstance, please let us know first of all, or else check out our, if it's a link on our website or wherever it is, so you have options.
Yeah, I guess I would caution about being too open and lenient with that because I, Blaine's got more things to do than answer the phone for, from people that, oh, I can't get my sho, snow shoveled. You know, you know, and my emergency is not your emergency, you know? And neither is, it's not Blaine's emergency. So I, I'm not sure how far we go to that, go with that, you know?
If they, if they could just somehow have, we, we could just have information posted. It's up to them.
I, yeah, for sure.
They gotta take the action themselves.
Biggest part of his goal was that it's a money-making proposition, the towing vehicles and the sidewalk. It's not making money. You have people that are busy towing vehicles to get the roads plowed. It's, it's expense that's incurred and.
Just really quick, uh, we had, we had one individual that was very upset, you know, because he had two vehicles get towed and, and they knew they parked them there and they weren't supposed to park them there, but the neighbor didn't get towed. And, and we talked, we talked a little bit about it and, you know, we actually, you know, we rely on tow companies to tow the vehicles. And if there's not enough tow trucks to tow all the vehicles, they might not get to all the vehicles and get them towed. And actually, that's what happens in Minneapolis, that's what happens in St. Paul. And I think what happened with the neighbor was, he had a great big huge giant four-wheel-drive pickup truck that towed, operator probably took one look at and said, well, that's the last one I'm gonna try to hook up and tow because he can go get a car or whatever. And the guy knew that he had parked there and that he probably deserved to get a ticket, but one of them waved because the other guy didn't get his car towed. And it's like, well, that's, it doesn't matter. You know, that's, I have no idea why the tow truck, it could have been the tow truck broke down and the guy never got it to the next one. And we didn't tow that many vehicles, but, yeah, we're not, we don't wanna make money that way.
That's, we're not making money.
We're not making money.
It's just safety issue for those people that do walk on sidewalks if they're clear. And then, and they think that's, that's the key or that wasn't, or that's important.
For the seniors that have a hardship and don't have a car and have to walk uptown for an appointment, grocery shopping.
I just, there was a lot of good neighbors too this winter.
Always.
Unbelievably, the, the sidewalks that weren't plowed, that you could see that were neighbors helping neighbors. So credit to the community on that.
Especially when there are a few machines broke down, I think.
Oh, yeah, when they get wore out. Um, other business? Any other business?
April first.
I guess, I don't know.
April first?
A board review? April first, yeah, okay. Uh, do we need to take any action on the twenty-third meeting or we do that next time?
We can do it next time.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, I think most of us kinda followed along or did a little bit of following along with the, the iPads. How'd that go?
It was fine.
Okay. I, I do think that, um, we may not need a hard copy delivered at home, but we should all have agendas. Hard copy agendas at our place.
Yeah, so actually, actually what I did is I took the PDF and I copied it into another file and I pulled, pulled up the agenda separate from the main PDF. And so then I just flipped back and forth between the agenda and the.
I know how to do that on that, I don't know how to do that on here.
But yeah, I, I mean, that's the one, that's the one thing I could see is, if you don't have an agenda to follow.
Yeah, yeah.
Paper agenda's a nice idea.
I think it is, because it gives us someplace to write our notes and stuff like that too. Even though we can, uh, put notes into our documents too, I guess.
So we'll still have to drop this off then?
No, 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 I, no.
We'll just, we'll just.
We'll just have it here at our place.
Oh, I see.
There's an agenda.
Yeah, or we could take it from over there or whatever.
You'll understand when you're rigorous.
No, I guess I thought you wanted ahead of time.
No, we get it, we get it electronically ahead of time and that's good enough. Yeah, and that's good enough for me. If it's good enough for you guys, I guess, that's.
We'll get it electronically.
I follow you.
We'll get it electronically, right, right. It's just when we're actually going through, it'd be easy to have it, easier to have it there. Okay, anything else? We had informational items, the water treatment facility. I really liked the, the, uh, digital, uh, thing for that because you could tell the, look at the pictures, you could zoom in, you could see the color, I like that. Any, uh, anything else, come before the council. All right, meeting adjourned.